The time is now seven oh one, and I'd like to call the November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty meeting to order. And I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Mr. Bentley, will you please call the roll?
Yes, I will. Chairman Hardy.
Here.
Member Tuckfield.
Here.
Member Provizano.
Here.
Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
How's it?
Good, and I'm here, Mr. Bentley.
All right.
President and accountant.
We have a quorum. Uh, next item is the approval of minutes. And there are two minutes from two different meetings that we need to approve tonight. The eleven-nine-twenty. Mr. Box, did I see in some of the communications that there were some things that needed to be made?
Uh, there were some last-minute changes this afternoon to the ten-twenty of minutes, but I don't think there were changes made to eleven-nine since you received your packet.
Okay. So, let's go ahead, and anybody have any discussion about the eleven-nine meeting? Then do I have a motion to approve the eleven-nine minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the McComb Township Planning Commission meeting minutes for Monday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty. This is Member Shudo.
Thank you, Member Shudo.
Provinzano support.
Thank you, Mr. Provizano. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Provizano.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. And Mr. Hardy.
Yes. All right, we move on to the ten-twenty, twenty, um, minutes. Are there any discussions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, there's no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the McComb Township Planning Commission meeting minutes from October twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that. Member Bentley?
Member Bentley, second. And then Member Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Provizano.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
And Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
All ayes.
All right, motion passes. All right, new business. And/or public hearing, rezoning request, residential one-family suburban. R1S.
Do we approve the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Provizano. If I've been away, um, we need to go ahead and prove the agenda for tonight. Anybody have any discussions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Oliver, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Oliver to approve the agenda as presented.
Support by Tuckfield.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
And Mr. Provizano.
Yes.
Great.
All right, now that we're back on track, uh, new business, rezoning request. Residential one-family suburban, R1S, to residential one-family urban, R1, permanent parcel zero-eight-three-three-one-five-one-zero-zero-four, located on the east of Romeo Plank Road, one thousand seven hundred feet south of Twenty-One Mile, section thirty-three, Salvador de Mercio Petitioner. Now, Mr. Box, as we go to you, can you explain to the community what the difference is between the R1S and the R1, please?
Uh, essentially, they're both residential. Uh, the, the primary difference, uh, being the, the requirements for lot sizes and how large lots can or how small they can be, uh, within, uh, the, I should say, the, the lot can be, not the house itself, but how, the size of the lots. So, what is being asked for here, uh, he is, uh, the petitioner is asking for a zoning that would allow, um, some smaller lots than what it's currently zoned.
And tonight, we're looking at this as a rezoning request only, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, there's a petitioner in the audience.
This is Bill Thompson from Leder Associates. Can you hear me?
Uh, barely, Mr. Thompson, but go ahead. If you have comments, we'd love to hear them.
Okay, I'd like to share a screen with you.
Okay, Ryan, can we do that?
He can do it. Go ahead.
Okay.
Give me a second to bring it up. Am I coming up on your screens?
No, we can only see your, uh, your folder right now.
Yeah, double-click it, sir. Maybe that'll make it come up.
I think you're sharing only the folder. You're not sharing the PowerPoint.
Give me a second.
Just double-click it. I think that'll bring it up. There you go.
Now we can see it.
This rezoning is a small piece of property. I think, uh, you're looking at the existing, existing zoning. South of Twenty-One Mile Road, east side of Romeo Plank. You notice everything around it is zone R1, and this piece is a hundred and six feet wide and about six hundred feet deep. For some reason, it got left off, and it's still R1S, but everything else was rezoned. Uh, this property is intended to be combined with the R1 immediately north of it. And that would make the project called Villa Toscana possible. Um, these, this combined parcels, the combined parcels would be immediately south of the Lealina Funeral Home. Uh, this is a master plan, uh, kind of fuzzy, but you can see towards the bottom, there's that, uh, heavy blue dashed line. Immediately north of that is that skinny parcel, a hundred and six by three hundred, and it's the same proposed zoning as everything around it. Uh, this is an aerial, actually, it's just a historical aerial I told you in there back from nineteen ninety-nine, showing the area around it. Um, very little development on this side of the road. Uh, you see my arrow. Those are proposed streets. That's what has been developed since that time. But mostly the area between this subdivision and our site is floodplain and the middle branch of the Clifton River. This is a current aerial. Here's the Lealina Funeral Home. This is the larger parcel that we're combining, want to combine with eventually. And right here, this barrel strip is the, uh, the parcel that's zone R1S. A little better look at it. It's a county GIS map. Again, you can see the Lealina Funeral Home up here. Then the two parcels are combined that, uh, my client owns. And the third parcel right here, which is that skinny piece again, combining with them, you end up with something that looks like this. You have the possibility of putting in about twenty-two homes in there, the detention basin. Uh, and it would back up to the middle branch, branch of the Clifton River. Uh, these lots would be extra deep. You'd rather do that, I think, than have a park back here, because there's no way to maintain the park, a good way to maintain it. So, we'll have to go to the ZBA eventually and get permission to lengthen those lots up a little bit. Um, with that, I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield. I did have a question.
Mr. Thompson, are you finished? A second. Okay, Mr. Tuckfield, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, obviously, uh, and, and as we've talked about with many of these rezonings, obviously, we're not in, in the business of, uh, of, of looking at what you're actually going to build there yet, although I appreciate, uh, the, the design view, just to give us some, uh, understanding where this parcel fits in. Uh, but I guess my question is, do you have, um, do you have some understanding of the, of the timeline? Is this a parcel that your client expects to develop soon? Or is this a parcel that is expected to be developed, um, further into the future? Do you have a, do you have a feeling on, on what that timeline is?
Yes, I already submitted the tentative preliminary platform to Villa Toscana.
Okay.
That you see now. That's the tentative preliminary plan. You've had a preliminary review. Uh, we're making modifications to it. We should have it back in for, uh, final review, hopefully, within the next two weeks.
So, you're expecting this to start going through the, the, the planning process for the subdivision, uh, sometime early twenty-one is kind of what you're on track for at the moment?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Are there any other questions from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Bentley.
Yes, Mr. Bentley.
Um, the, the right, or I should say, the north, uh, northwest corner of this, uh, uh, plot that, uh, is being shown. Us, is that to remain R1S as, uh, it is, uh, currently, uh, zoned? Or?
That's, that's not part of our petition. That's not, it's property owned by someone else.
I see. So, that'll be the only one that'll remain R1S if this were to be approved?
Correct. If, if you'll notice, you're not supposed to look at the site plan, uh, but we've left a strip in here between the road and that parcel. So that eventually, if that parcel was sold to someone, they could, in fact, uh, develop a couple lots in there facing this street.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Box or Mr. Skirdo, did you have anything else you'd like to share, sir?
Oh, nothing in particular. I think, uh, all departments internally are, are supporting this rezoning request.
Okay, good.
Hey, Josh, is this a recommendation or an approval?
Recommendation.
So, the, the next three would be recommendations?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Special land use recommendation, or is that a, is that an approval? I'm assuming you're talking about, about three items on the agenda, Jasper?
Correct. A, B, and C.
I believe those are all recommendations, but I can confirm that before we get to it.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's focus on this one. Uh, do I have any other comments from the planning commission? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to go to the public first?
Oh, thank you, sir. God, I am just not with it today.
You are.
So, let's go to the public. Is there anyone from the public, Ryan, that would like to speak or put a comment in the chat? Anyone? Ryan?
I'm not seeing anybody. Ryan is not, uh, I'm, I'm hosting. This is Josh. I'm hosting this evening, and I do not see any hands raised.
All right, if there are no public comments, then I don't know if I need to make a motion, since there were none. Um, I guess we should probably make a motion at seven sixteen to close public comments. Um, does anybody want to make that motion?
Mr. Oliver, a motion to close, uh, public portion.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to second that, but I did just have a question. I want to confirm this with Mr. Assorti. If he can verify, I never remember which we are supposed to have as a public hearing. I just want to verify that the rezoning is not a public hearing. Uh, is, is that something, is, is that correct, Mr. Assorti? Or, or can we just close it as a standard public comment?
Mr. Doesn't appear that Mr. Green is on the call.
Ah, okay, thank you. Mr. Box, then I, I guess the question would be to you. Do, do you know, are we okay just doing? I, I never keep them straight. Just want to make sure I'm correctly seconding it. Are we okay to, uh, to second just closing it, or do we have to state it as, as closing a public hearing?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Um, our, my, my apologies. I had, uh, something in the way of my mic. Um, are we, are we okay, um, just to go in closing public portion, or do we have to say we're closing a public hearing?
This is, this is Mr. Skirdo. A formal motion has to be made stating, uh, to close the public hearing and stating date and time that the public hearing was closed.
So, with, with the rezoning, we do have to do that with a public hearing. Okay, very good. And as long, Mr. Oliver, as long as you're, you're okay to modify it to that effect, I'm good to second it.
Yeah, with the date and time.
All right, folks, uh, close your mics if you're not speaking. On eleven-twenty-three at seven sixteen, Mr. Oliver made a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Tuckfield, I believe you wanted to second that?
That is correct.
Okay, sir. Uh, Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Provizano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
All ayes.
Okay, motion passes. Now, do we have a motion to resume, um, from R1S to R1 for permanent parcel zero-eight-three-three-one-five-one-zero-zero-four? Anybody like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Township Board of Trustees to rezone permit parcel zero-eight-three-three-one-five-one-zero-zero-four from R1S to R1. And this would be based upon the fact that it, the change would meet up with our master plan and also by recommendations from all the appropriate department heads.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Member Bentley?
Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Provizano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Okay, all ayes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, next item on our list, rezoning request. Agricultural AG to residential one-family urban, R1, permanent parcel zero-eight-zero-five-one-zero-zero, zero-two-one, located on the south side of Twenty-Six Mile, three hundred and eighty feet east of Romeo Plank Road, section five, and again, Salvador de Mercio, uh, petitioner. I'm assuming, Mr. Thompson, that'll be you, but before we go to the petitioner, let's go to Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this, uh, is very similar to the last item in, in that it's a rezoning and that it's a small, uh, parcel, uh, to be, uh, developed in conjunction with neighboring parcels. We have a lot of, uh, remnant agricultural parcels around the township, uh, that, that remain, uh, oftentimes from maybe the homestead of a farm that, that sold the rest of their property for a, a, uh, subdivision development or, or what have you, but this is a similar situation to that. Uh, it, this kind of park, uh, would be a residential development, uh, in section five of the township, uh, south of Twenty-Six Mile, east of Romeo Plank. Uh, currently, as I mentioned, it is owned agriculture, uh, and it would be combined, uh, along Pienza Drive, uh, should it be approved as a rezoning to R1, uh, and developed as a site condominium with, uh, roughly twelve units to be developed on this six-and-a-half acre parcel. Uh, all departments have reviewed, and, and we have no objections, and we are in support of this. And I believe you are correct. The petitioner, uh, for Mr. Di Mercurio is Mr. Thompson, who is on, uh, call.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, would you have anything you'd like to share?
I've got another PowerPoint for you if you'd like to see it.
I'd love to see it. Go ahead, sir.
Is that visible?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, this project would end up being called Cortona Park, uh, San Twenty-Six, south side of Twenty-Six, east of Romeo Plank. This is the existing zoning, properties all around it, R, R1, with the exception of the property immediately west. That's that little shopping center. That's where there's, there's a bank on the corner, and then the strip shopping center. The property right here is, um, Philip Palmetto subdivision, developed about five years ago. That's the same owner as, uh, because, well, Sam Di Mercurio was the owner. He developed, uh, Philip Palmetto, and he has purchased this property, uh, from the estate of Mr. Gracepear. Again, this is a master plan map, and you can see that this parcel, again, is the same zoning as all the property. It's proposed to be the same zoning as all the property around it, which is our. Uh, you can see why it was on agricultural. This is a nineteen ninety-nine area. Everything around it is farmland. Uh, this property is actually, basically, by this large pond, not that really large, uh, but it's a nice-sized pond on the property. I believe that pond was used to irrigate all this property one time or another. This is a current aerial. You can see Philip Palmetto. To the south is English Gardens Two. To the west is, is, there's a couple houses here. There's the shopping center. And again, this is the parcel itself. And it's basically been mole, maintained by Mr. Gracepear for the last fifty or twenty years, I guess. Uh, the county GIS, again, is showing the current lot lines as they stand. All of Philip Palmetto, all of English Gardens on Shinnifuck Drive, uh, the two residential parcels to the west and the commercial parcel on the corner. The intent is to develop this, take Palmetto, um, Pienza Drive, which is in, uh, Philip Palmetto, carry it around through and take it back out to, uh, the Twenty-Six Mile Road. Now, give me a second. I'd like to point something out. Okay, take a look at the, uh, the zoning map. It's got the street patterns on it. You'll notice that if you come in through this proposed site, basically, you're feeding Philip Palmetto subdivision. That's what the only traffic is have coming in here. Because coming down here and then turning left and then turning right and then turning left to get into English Gardens just doesn't make any sense. And again, coming in here to get back into, uh, English Gardens or into, uh, Country Club North doesn't make much sense, because here's a main that's just a Country Club North. So, having the entrance here, we have to have the entrance here, basically, because we're over thirty lots. If you have more than thirty lots on a dead end, um, you're in violation of fire codes. Uh, so, we have to have entrance onto Twenty-Six Mile Road. So, that's basically the setup, uh, the property. We're asking for the property to be zoned in conformity with all the other property around it, so it can be developed. I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, sir. Let's go to the planning commissioners for this rezoning request. Commissioners? Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Member Bentley.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Uh, I have a question for Mr. Skirdo. In the, uh, analysis of zoning pattern, uh, for his comments on this, uh, development, uh, I think it's page three. He talks, uh, uh, Mr. Skirdo, you talk about, uh, R1, uh, but then describe R1S, um, as, as if that would be the preferred. Uh, and I guess I, I, I was confused by that. I would like to, uh, understand, uh, what you're meaning there.
Um, there was a miss, this is Mr. Skirdo. There was a, uh, misprint. Um, in terms of this, R1 is the preferable zoning and matches with everything around there as well and with the master plan.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Skirdo. It was, i- it's intended, R1S, to be adjacent to, uh, you know, more, uh, like, commercial areas, so.
Yeah, it was a misprint on my part. I think I apologize for that.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
So, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Are there any other comments from the commissioners? Anyone? Okay, I'm gonna open this to the public at seven-twenty-eight, and I have a comment from Ronald Papa. Roughly, how many homes would be available to fit on this parcel if it becomes residential? I'm assuming that there wouldn't be any changes to the large pond there. Uh, should we go to the?
This is, while I understand why somebody might be interested in that, that's not, we're here to look at rezoning, not how.
Okay. That's fair enough. So, we're just rezoning. That's all we're doing.
Correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Papa, thank you for your question, but this is just a rezoning. This isn't a site plan. That will come later. All right. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Mr. Box?
Uh, if you have a question, uh, star nine to raise your hand virtually. Uh, I'm, I'm not seeing anybody right now.
Okay.
No, no hands raised.
Okay, then at seven-twenty-nine, on November twenty-third, we are going to close the public hearing for Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll second that.
Well, who, uh, made the motion?
You can, you can make the motion, Mr. Chairman. I thought you were making a motion.
Oh, I wasn't making the motion. I was just wondering if anybody wanted to make it.
Okay.
Chairman.
Mr. Oliver.
This Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, sir.
I will make that motion to close the public, uh, the, the public portion stated on the time and date you said.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, follow the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Provizano.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes, and Mr. Hardy.
Yes. Great, motion passes. To close the public hearing. Now, do we have a motion for the rezoning request?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
This is for, uh, Mr. Skirdo as well. Um, the last statement in his, uh, analysis indicated property can't be developed until the site.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, are you there?
We lost him.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I think he got muted.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes, yes.
Okay, start again, please. You, uh, we lost you for a moment there.
Okay, on the, uh, on Mr. Skirdo's, uh, review is analysis. Uh, the last statement is, uh, a final note. A property cannot be developed until the condom, site condominium approval is also granted. Uh, I wondered what the status of the. I wondered what the status of this was.
The site condominium, you see the preliminary plan in front of you. Approval for that specific layout has not been granted yet. Tonight, we're just dealing with the rezoning as a first step. Once they have a proper zoning, then the more detailed plans will start coming forward to the planning commission and the township board.
Understand, thank you.
Okay.
No further questions.
We need a motion.
I, I actually, if I could, sorry, I was muted there as I was trying to say something. One thing I just wanted to double check on and one thing we have on our comments from the assessor's office is noting that the legal description is for the wrong parcel. Are we okay with the, with the legal description? Or Mr. Box, Mr. Skirdel, are we good on that? Can we pass this with regard, without regard to that particular comment?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, very good. Sorry, Charlie, just want to make sure we had that taken care of.
Just follow up and then it'll get cleaned up going forward. Okay, we'll clean it up. Yeah, Aaron, that's gonna get caught in the next realm of things, okay?
Yep, I just, just wanted to make sure we're all good at this point.
Thank you. On that, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Oliver again. I move to request to make recommendations to the board on zoning requests. AG Residential One Family Urban to R1 Permanent Parcel oh eight oh five one zero 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 two one, located south side of Twenty-Six Mile Road.
Okay, motion by Mr. Oliver. Do we have a second?
I'll second and member Shudo.
Member Shudo is seconded. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Chudo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Provizano?
Yes.
And Mr. Bentley, yes.
Great. Motion to recommend to the board has been approved. All right, next item on our list is is a special land use. Synergy Athletics LLC, permanent parcel zero eight one seven three four four one one zero, located on the west side of Regency Center Drive, one thousand three hundred and seventy feet north of Twenty-Three Mile Road, section seventeen, Stephen B. Burmester.
Yes, good afternoon, gentlemen. I am on the phone tonight. Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, thank you, sir. We'll start with our planners. Mr. Box, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. So as you read, Synergy Athletics, this is a special land use in Firefly. As it was asked before, this is a final decision. This is not a recommendation with regards to the special land use. I know that question was asked a few minutes ago. This property is closed in the Regency Commerce Center north of Twenty-Three Mile West Romeo Plain. It is proposed as an Englishable facility, which is allowed as a special land use in the M1. I'm sure you guys read through your packets and saw the layout. This is not a, a brand new facility, my understanding, and I'm sure Mr. Herbst can talk about this, but my understanding is this is a facility that's moving here, so they're fully aware of their needs in terms of space indoors as well. Departments review.
Mr. Box, can you stop for just a moment? Ladies and gentlemen, if you're a panelist or an attendee, will you please make sure your mic is muted? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Box.
Yes, thank you. So again, they are, they are moving to this facility, hopefully, and so they are aware of their needs internally and externally as far as space on the inside and parking on the outside. All departments are supporting this, recommending approval for the special land use. As you probably noticed in Mr. Skirdel's write-up, he did have one question about lots of parking requirements. Based on calculations, I think they're, they're providing more parking than, than what is required. As well as the fact that, as I mentioned, this is an existing business. They're, they're pretty familiar with the clientele. So at this time, we are in full support of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. I'd like to move to the petitioner, Mr. Herbst.
You are, thank you.
Would you like to share?
No, sir, I appreciate you again. I, I thought this was actually happening next week, so we didn't, not prepare anything differently than what was submitted. But as Mr. Box said, we are a current operation with members within our own organization that are moving into a facility closer to where our participants kind of nucleus is at. To his point already, with the transition of changeover from one, one team coming to the next, it is sufficiently covered with the parking that we have and most, most everything that we have in the previous facility is moving into this current facility.
Okay, sir, thank you. At this time, I, well, you know what? I have a question. Moving into this facility and it's all gonna be indoors, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to open it to the commissioners.
Yes, Mr. Hardy, Commissioner Oliver here has a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, to Mr. Herbst. Can you just give me a day, like, give me a Saturday morning rundown of what would be going on in this building and what would take place?
Roughly between eight and nine AM, depending on the, the first teams are scheduled, they would come in, have their, their training session for approximately an hour and a half. It would typically be baseball or softball training. Within the nets, they, they potentially would have a, an additional half hour of speed and agility training. They would leave and about fifteen to twenty minutes later, maybe probably a half hour later, the next team would be scheduled to come in. There, there may be a speed and agility session that happens at the same time as one other one to try to accommodate that extra half hour. But for the most part, there would be one team in here practicing, like I said, from maybe nine AM to ten thirty, approximately leaving around ten forty-five to eleven AM and the next team would come in.
And roughly, how many square foot building are we looking at that all them, that that one team would be in?
It's fifteen thousand, approximately fifteen thousand two hundred ninety, I believe, fifteen thousand three hundred square feet, say.
And then there'd be, there'd be one player, I'm unders, if I'm understanding right, one in, do you call them batting cages? What do you actually officially call them?
There will be the, the, the opportunity to be one full team here of twelve to fourteen players with the ability to have multiple batting cages pulled out or all cages retracted back to have a, a team practice in the, in the wide open box.
So at, at most, there'd be what, thirty-five people, forty people in that building?
Participants in the back of the training area, there would probably not be thirty-five people at max, there'd be probably sixteen at most in the back area. There is a lobby, front office area where parents would be required during the practice or training session. Quite often, most of them don't stay. The players would get dropped off or our high school players drive themselves or even our collegiate players drive themselves. So at most in the back training area, there'd be sixteen, sixteen people and that probably includes the coaches as well.
And there'd be no competition?
No, the, the facility would not be set up to house open competitions in game formats. Baseball is just not, it's, it's not big enough, obviously, to do that, only, at only fifty thousand square feet, but everything would be a practice and training session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I got a question to the petitioner. I'm looking at the diagram right now and let's say there's one, two, three, four, let's say there's five training areas or hitting areas. Could five different teams reserve each one of those separately? So there could be, there could be one team on one, one hitting cage, one team on another hitting cage. So you can have five or six different teams in there one time, correct? Because if it's running out.
No, sir. There will not be five teams in there one time. There's not, the, the way we are set up, it would only be, you know, I'll say one team if it was a team and a half because they brought extra players in, but there would only be for one team. It's a team training center, not necessarily a retail batting cage type of place where somebody could come in and bring an entire team and fit into one cage. The way the, the facility is set up and for its usage and the way the cages move, it would be rented out as a facility, as a whole facility to one team.
Okay, so they can move the curtains and if they wanted to do some drills and stuff like that, they could use that as, because you have AstroTrip, right? So if they want to do infield practice or something like that, could you do something like that in there?
That's correct, but that's controlled by the practice planning of the coaches themselves for that team.
Right, but, but you, you would know in advance if they're gonna do that, so you would have people in there that take the screens down and stuff like that. So the fitness and agility, are you gonna have private trainers to work on that? So if I want to come in, if I'm an athlete, a high school athlete that has a chance to go college, but I need to work on my speed or my agility, my side to side movements or my ninety-foot sprint, are you gonna have separate trainers in there to work on that or is that gonna be part of the, the team?
Yes, quite often we do have trainers that come specifically set up with the coaches and/or the players themselves, but everything by appointment only when they come in.
Okay, that's, so that's just like any other training area in, in the, in the area. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have.
Scott, I'll take my mic off. Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Are there other commissioners that would like to speak? Hearing none, I'll open it. I'll open it to the public. Mr. Box, do you have anybody that would like to talk?
Anybody wanted to comment, please do the virtual hand raise, star nine on your phone. Or if you're on your computer, you can just click on the raise hand icon. I am not seeing anybody.
Okay, well, we opened the public portion at seven forty-four and we'll close it at seven forty-five on November twenty-third. Do I have a motion as such?
So.
And that was Mr. Oliver?
Yep.
Supporter. Do I have a second?
So, support. Provinzano.
Mr. Provinzano has seconded the motion. All right, Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Provizano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
All eyes.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has passed. Now, we need a motion to, for the special land use for Synergy Athletics LLC. Anyone want to make the motion?
Is the participant allowed the motion?
Uh, no, sir, you are not.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to grant approval of the special land use for Synergy Athletics LLC, permanent parcel zero eight one seven three three four one one zero, located the west side of Regency Center Drive, pursuant to the planning consultant's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Do I have a second?
Support by Tuckfield.
And supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provizano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
All eyes.
All right, motion passes for the special land use for Synergy Athletics LLC.
Congratulations, welcome to the township.
All right, next.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next item. Site plan, DGR Four Delivery Station, permanent parcel zero slash eight dash one seven dash three zero zero dash zero zero one, located on the north side of Twenty-Three Mile, west of Romeo Plain, Ryan Companies, U.S. Incorporated petitioner. Mr. Box or Mr. Skirdel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, DGR Four Delivery Station, this is a proposed delivery, new delivery building as well as a parking area for employees. This location is north of Twenty-Three and immediately east of future Garfield. It's a relatively large parcel and the, you look through your packets and saw the development is, it's for the most part positioned on the southern piece of the property that has to do with some wetlands that exist on the northern piece of the property. All departments have reviewed this development and are recommending approval of the site plan. I believe the petitioner, as well as their engineering team is on the call this evening and can probably answer questions and may have something to present.
Mr. Box, this will not have, this will not, this will not in any way interfere with Garfield going, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner, not commissioner, petitioner.
Yes, hello, this is Kyle Schott with Ryan Companies. Can everyone hear me?
We can, go ahead, Mr. Schott.
Great, thank you for having us. Also with me, well, first let me share my screen here. Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation?
No. Not as of yet. Oh, there we go.
There we go, all right. So with me tonight, we'll do, so we're here to discuss our delivery station site plan on Twenty-Three Mile Road. Real quickly, we'll do some introductions on who's with me tonight. Like I said, my name's Kyle Schott with Ryan Companies. I'm our Director of Real Estate Development out of our Great Lakes region located in Chicago. Also with me is Josh Mannion with Progressive A&amp;E. They are the architect engineer. As well as a representative of our future tenant, Shannon, Shannon Midgley is with as well. I'm not sure if she'll be able to speak, because I think she is just an attendee on the call, but she is, she is here. In addition to the introductions, we're gonna go through the site location, speak about use, the proposed use and operations of the facility, go over an overview of the site plan and the flow and discuss briefly schedule for the project. Here's a context plan of our site, of our site on Twenty-Three Mile. Mr. Box had previously mentioned the wetlands, which you can see a pretty clear delineation of those wetlands to the north, which is why we've kept our, our site plan more focused to the south of the property. Zoning, current zoning is M1 Light Industrial. Our proposed use is a warehouse facility to utilizing for package delivery. Further, on the use and operations, I want to kind of walk through a, a day in the life here of the facility. We'll start it in the evening hours. This is a twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven operation, but how this works is we expect line haul trucks to be coming in from other facilities between ten PM and eight AM. This facility will see probably fifteen to twenty-five trucks in evening. Those trucks will, you know, be unloaded, those packages pre, everything's prepackaged already and it's then sorted into delivery routes. Then we'll start our delivery operation. Um, then we'll start our delivery operations where uh, van drivers will arrive to the site around nine twenty AM. Uh, and leave their personal vehicles, get into um, the vans. And then uh, the first vans will, first wave of vans will start their deliveries at nine fifty AM. Uh, van drivers will then be out for um, the duration of the day on the routes, returning uh, between seven PM and nine PM. Um, that's done intentionally, uh, to uh, miss the high peak traffic hours, uh, or uh, in the, you know, eight to nine AM or seven AM to nine AM and the, you know, five PM to, to seven PM at night. So that's done with intention uh, for, for traffic. There are, there is an opportunity for what's called flex afternoon delivery where um, delivery drivers may use their personal vehicles, not um, the uh, vans. And they can come in and pick up, you know, uh, one-off or two-off package. Um, uh, as a, you know, contract employee, uh, to uh, to do some what's called flex delivery. So while this, uh, the operation is twenty-four seven, there is, there is one delivery timeframe, meaning, you know, there's not multiple um, times vans are coming and going. They, they leave between um, nine fifty and, you know, call it eleven thirty or noon. And then they repeat, they return between seven PM and nine PM. To kind of discuss the, the site plan and uh, traffic flow. I brought up our site plan here. Um, the building located in the middle uh, of the plan, two hundred two hundred and one thousand square feet. Uh, what we're showing here is um, a color-coded uh, plan of the parking. Here on the left side, um, the plan west, um, but south side of the site is our associate parking. So what uh, associates mean, means that that's going to be the, the folks that are working on the interior of the building. Parking located here, and this is an opportunity for both flex drivers um, to park their cars while they're picking up um, packages uh, to take out to delivery and for uh, the public to park cars if they uh, decide to come to the facility and pick up a, a delivery themselves. So that's the intention of this parking. The blue uh, areas here is uh, van parking. Um, each spot is not dedicated for one van. As I mentioned, delivery drivers will drive personal, personal vehicles into these blue areas, um, drop their personal vehicle and get into a delivery van. Those vans will then make their way on either side of the building um, into these queuing areas where they will queue up here and then move into um, underneath uh, canopied areas uh, for loading of the vans. And then those vans will then leave out and um, go to twenty-three mile, uh, out on the routes and come back in and then park um, at, in the evening. And this area in the back is the uh, area for the truck deliveries, which we'd mentioned um, earlier. Will come in, um, drop uh, products and then leave back out the same way. So that's a um, rough, rough traffic flow within the site. Um, we are also showing uh, multiple detention ponds on either side. And as you can see, we're um, being strategic in how we lay this out to not impact any of the high quality wetlands to the. Here's a blow up view of uh, the floor plan and the elevate, elevation rendering that we're proposing. Office and um, you know, public access would be uh, to the south of the site. Um, sortation and, sortation and um, other, other building happenings uh, happening in the, the back and with uh, um, with uh, truck deliveries at the north portion of the building. Here's a quick uh, layout of our landscape plan. Been showing focus uh, along twenty-three mile uh, to give landscape buffer. From twenty-three mile and the uh, site. And then this is just a uncolor coordinated, uncolor uh, coordinated uh, site plan. It shows a little bit more detail into the van loading area. Schedule, um, we're looking to uh, start in uh, February of twenty-one with an October twenty-one completion and launch date. I'll open it up to any questions and I can uh, refer back to any of the, the previous plans as necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. I see your first.
You go ahead.
Member Shudo, I see on uh, page six of eight. Your first shift starts at two AM and uh, stops at twelve thirty PM. You have two hundred and eighty-five employees. Is that considered drivers too, or is that all uh, people unloading the trucks and getting prepared for your uh, delivery vans?
The, the two eighty-five, uh, I believe is, it, that is the employees that would be in the facility.
Okay. So they're prepping for the vans to come in, correct? To, to load everything up? Okay. Shift two, you have forty-eight employees. Is that uh, employees in the vans getting ready to get loaded?
No, that, that is uh, that's employees that are um, they're, again, in the facility and uh, managing operations in between, you know, shifts.
Okay. Uh, third question. Uh, when, when your semis come in at night, how many, when you have trailers in the dock, how many trailers you expect to be in the docks and how many drop trailers you feel you'll have per night? Because I'm sure that these orders are probably two days out in advance, so they can build them and, and, and prepare them for the trucks. Am I correct?
So what we've built the site plan for is, you know, uh, sixteen uh, trailers at the docks and twelve uh, trailer parks. Um, the, everything that comes in is going to be going out um, the same night. So uh, that is the intention. If uh, Shannon is able to speak uh, on the call, she may be able to provide a little bit more clarity to that. But that, that was the intention to have um, have all trucks come in and leave the same night.
Okay. So, so when you, you pull them to a dock, somebody won't unhook and hook up to another trailer, they'll, they'll stay hooked up to their trailer, unload it and then pull out, correct?
I believe that, that is the uh, operations, but uh, Shannon, it looks like you're, you're available to speak.
Hi there. Yes, this is Shannon speaking. And when I raised my hand, it, it blinked out for a minute, which definitely could have been my internet, but I'll go ahead and, and answer the question and um, please feel free to let me know if I missed anything. So, so yeah, so those employees, we'd, we'd expect about two hundred and forty full-time with a number of part-time opportunities. So those are the um, you know, the first, second, third shifts and some of those will be unloading packages from the line hauls. And then, you know, um, putting those packages onto movable racks by zip code to go into those um, smaller delivery vans. Um, in addition to that, we'd have about probably, you know, two thirty to two fifty drivers. Um, and those would be um, separate. Those would be um, third-party vendors, but um, three hundred and thirty to fifty or so um, additional jobs from that um, two forty full-time plus part-time opportunities.
Okay. So when, when I come in as an employee, I park my car, I get in my van or I pull my car up or truck to the second to station area. I give you my code or zip code and you load my truck accordingly, correct?
Correct. Yep. So you, you park your personal vehicle there, you'd grab your delivery van, um, and you'd get your van loaded. And then you'd go off for about an eight to ten hour um, route with about a forty-five minute radius from that delivery station.
So you, so you get a handheld or a, a, a phone and you'd probably have a dynamic routing or something like that would route you per, per set?
Yeah, we have a couple of different, um, you know, routing programs that we use, um, and, and you'd have a, a route. So you'd be leaving the delivery station, doing all of your deliveries and then returning back to the station. So you'd just be out on, um, on one route that day.
Right. And uh, so are, are these uh, CDL drivers or just chauffeur license? Are there C two drivers? Are there just uh, chauffeur license or what, what type of uh, trucks do to delivering? Is it all vans or do you have semis doing deliveries also?
So most of them are the, the um, the vans. Um, and as far as the licensing, that's something I could certainly look into to, to get you uh, more information back um, through Kyle. But yes, those are all those um, smaller delivery vans primarily, um, that are making these deliveries.
Okay. So they would uh, comply with the DOT to do pre-truck inspections and would show when they started and stopped from one stop to another. So to calculate how many hours around the road, correct?
I believe so. And I, Kyle, I would love to, to see if you or Kim Lee Horn have a, a good answer for this one as well. This might be um, up your alley.
In, in terms of uh, you know, checking their hours on the road?
Well, yeah, because when, when they leave the plant, they have to do a pre-truck inspection, I'm assuming, correct? If you, if they're taking one of your vehicles out to make sure it's safe to drive on the road?
Yes.
So that uh, the pre-trips now uh, required by the DOT to do electronically. Is that how your drivers would uh, check in and out?
Well, we can, I, I don't have a specific answer uh, to the uh, operations of the vans if they are checking in uh, electronically at the vans or if they're doing that i- in the facility. There is a check-in process. Uh, but I can get you more detail uh, specifically as to what that process is.
Okay. And then, then I have one more question. Fueling of the vans, how are you going to do that? Are you going to do them onsite? Are you going to do them in a local gas station in the area?
That's been done.
Sorry, go ahead, Kyle. I was going to say, we do have a mobile fueling program. So um, folks have a gas card that they can go to a local gas station. Um, we have a partnership with um, a few gas stations that they would be using this card there. So most of that fueling is going to be happening um, off-site along the routes as needed.
Okay. Because I, I worked for a company and we had uh, onsite, a company come onsite and fuel the trucks and I wasn't for that at all. And hopefully if you use the credit cards, it hopefully is someone in our township that's uh, that's close. We do have a lot of gas stations in the area. Um, that's pretty much all the questions I have, and I thank you guys for uh, answering the questions. I think you did a good job answering them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Other commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Bentley.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Uh, my questions are regarding the traffic. Uh, do you, do, do you foresee um, a lot of vans leaving uh, nearly the same time? Uh, is there going to be staging or stacking of vehicles as they try to enter on to a twenty-three mile road? Um, and uh, what uh, have you done any studies that would uh, identify uh, that there would not be any uh, holdups to uh, to the ongoing traffic on twenty-three mile road?
Yeah. So uh, and I'll let Shannon uh, speak with a little bit more uh, detail if necessary, but these uh, um, the vans are uh, leaving waves. So they're um, and, and it's spaced out about uh, twenty minutes. So you, you're going to have twenty minutes on, you know, or vans are going to leave and then twenty minutes later, the, another set i- is going to leave. So it's spaced out. So you're not getting um, a significant influx all at one time. Uh, but you will see uh, the vans, you know, leaving the site between about nine fifty to, to about uh, noon. We have uh, completed a, a traffic study. Um, that, that, you know, is being reviewed uh, currently with the county. Um, that, that showed uh, that showed that write-out operation um, is, is probably the, the most likely or, or the best operation to minimize any um, backup traffic onto the site.
All right. I thank you very much. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Oliver, just, just a quick question maybe to Sharon. Will, will there be any storage of any, any of the product or will it generally just be in and out?
Absolutely. Yeah. So this will be in and out. So they'll be coming in packages, you know, prepackaged overnight and then they'll be leaving around nine forty-five, ten, as Kyle said. Um, and you know, most of the time if things work out, which they usually do, those are being dropped off at a customer's house. Um, and no packages are returning to the station. So it's, it's a quick in and quick out.
So there wouldn't be trailers sitting there with product in for weeks on end or nothing like that?
Nope. Exactly. It'll be less than a day on average.
Thank you for the questions.
And to clarify, clarify that point, the intent here is it, it's sorting these prepackaged uh, pieces into delivery routes. That's the intent of, of the facility.
Okay.
I have one, I have one more quick question. How would a resident come and pick up a package? Would they, if, if it's in for delivery, do you contact them or is it done via email or how's that work?
I can jump in here as well. Sorry, I was finding the mute button. Um, packages or customers would not be coming to this location um, to pick up packages.
All right. I, I'm sorry, Shannon. I misspoke. Uh, I, I thought that that was going to be an option here. So I apologize.
I do not believe so. Um, we could definitely look into that, Kyle, to, to double check to make sure that um, you've got the, the correct information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Um, Mr. Box or Mr. Skirdel, I have a question for you. Um, looking at the design, the site plan and the traffic flow, how many, how, how big is that wetlands? That is kind of busts up against the subdivisions that are back there? I mean, what are we talking about with feet as far as?
Little over seven hundred feet of, of wooded wetlands between uh, the back of, of the, the parking that you see on your screen uh, to the neighbor's property, uh, neighboring property to the north. Uh, and, and it's, it is not just wetlands. There are large trees. Uh, you would not, not only would you uh, not be able to see through, you probably wouldn't be able to hear anything through such a large area as well. Uh, with regards to the traffic, I, I mean, I, as you guys well know, I come from a traffic background. I think the circulation here looks nice. Um, and it was brought up previously about uh, Garfield and how this might impact Garfield. So the, the site plan you see on your screen right here to the area to the west, which would be the top of your screen, uh, is exactly where future Garfield would go. Uh, and there is a possibility that uh, a connection could be made uh, to this facility onto Garfield as well, which could further alleviate any traffic issues should there be any.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. Commissioners, is there anyone else before I open it to the public?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
I have two questions. Um, one being uh, the, the traffic uh, for emergency vehicles. Um, what is the route that a, an emergency vehicle uh, would, would uh, traverse? I, I can't tell, but uh, and then the plans, they weren't on, they were unclear. Are there uh, are there gates or um, yeah, gates or control arms that would preclude uh, vehicles from going back into the uh, uh, perimeter parking areas? Uh, I know that the truck uh, parking uh, that doesn't flow through the site. Uh, they have to turn around, but if uh, you have a, emergency or fire vehicles, what is that route uh, identified? Or where is that route identified? And does that, is there a requirement on the, what would be the northeast uh, corner of your parking lot? There appears to be a, an emergency drive. I'm not sure if that was contingent upon some of your discussions uh, thus far with uh, uh, any of the uh, authorities having jurisdiction or uh, or, or what? Uh, could you respond to at least the emergency vehicle uh, routes and, and traffic here?
Yeah. Well, first, um, let's, we'll start with your uh, your first question and Josh Mannion with uh, Progressive A&amp;E is, is on and I'd like to him to speak directly to that if he could.
Yep, certainly. This is Josh Mannion with Progressive A&amp;E. Um, so the uh, emergency access would enter um, either on the east side or west side where those green arrows are and could circulate around uh, to the, to the north of the site. Go through uh, the, the northern edge of that, uh, the blue parking area and make a complete circle um, around the site uh, through there. Um, there are, to your question about gates, there are no uh, gates interior to the site. There are, to your question about gates, there are no gates interior to the site beyond the one that goes into the truck yard. So there is free access around the building. And we've been in communication with the fire department during planning review and sent them drawings for their review. And the only, the only comment about access is what you mentioned there to the sort of bottom right of the page, the northeast side of the site. And it's more in regards to serving the adjacent property to the east with access. And this was sort of the plan as, as the township in the future develops, the only drive, which is depicted there with that dashed out area. That would be a connection that we'd be able to accommodate with this site plan, allowing emergency access to get, get to that east property line on the only drive through the site.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Then my next question is for protection of the wetlands here. Were there any discussion about bio swales or anything to, to protect that wetlands to the north?
So all of, all of the stormwater runoff from this site is being drained through the storm sewer network to the south towards 23 Mile Road into the two detention ponds. And then going to discharge into the Crittenon Drain. So there's actually no water from the site draining from the developed portions that is into, to the north, further into the wetlands. So we don't have any, you know, measures, bio swales or similar measures that we've implemented in order to, you know, treat water before it goes to the wetlands because it's going the other direction.
All right, I appreciate that. So no runoff from your parking areas into that wetlands area?
That's correct.
Yep, very good. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
Chairman, this is member Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
A question, I think this is to Mr. Box. Mr. Box, we've talked about the potential change in plan with regards to Leoni Drive through the, the north part of this development. I know we, we talked about this slightly at our last planning commission meeting. Is it appropriate to talk about it this time or is that something we're not discussing with regards to the site plan?
Well, you are correct that we did discuss Leoni Drive not going through at our last planning commission meeting. The current master plan does show the only drive connecting through. It was brought up, I think, by Mr. Bentley, the, the connection on the northwest, or excuse me, northeast corner of this property that kind of outlined something going into what looks like a cul-de-sac in the bottom right of the screen here. That emergency access is, is more for the neighboring property than it is for this facility. Because right now I believe it's Regency Drive is the only way in and out of, of that development. And this would provide that secondary access should the neighboring property owner develop north of what would be the only drive. As far as, as being requirement for this development, that is, you're, you're correct in that, you know, it's somewhat fair to talk about it because this development would require to follow what's in the master plan. And the master plan does in fact show Leoni Drive going through to future Garfield. We are in the process of amending that. It will be actually presented to the board of trustees tomorrow night to advertise that to neighboring communities, to remove that from the master plan in hopes to not have to develop it. This area being not just wetlands, but wooded wetlands would be difficult, if not impossible, to put a road through. Eagle may not allow us to put a road through there. So if we don't amend the master plan, it's possible that it would render this entire parcel undevelopable because without following the master plan, we can't approve anything. So, yes, I think you're right in that Leoni Drive not connecting through does relate to this. I don't think it should, should be anything that would hold up this site plan.
And I would tend to agree, you know, we've had, we've had that section not connected for some period of time. I guess my question was more, you know, we have discretion elsewhere. There's times when we have approved things that may not be specifically adhering to the master plan. And there's been times when we have. My question is, as we're looking at this tonight, can we, can, do we have the leeway to approve this regardless of whether or not it matches the master plan? And if so, does there need to be a change in the master plan? Or would someone else, say the county, hold up this parcel because of, because of the fact that they don't have the cut through on there yet?
I believe you, you do have the leeway to approve this master plan the way it is presented. For, for sake of township development, we are removing it from the master plan so that we are consistent with, with the way things are developed.
Because, and here's my, my concern with it. I, you know, this, this looks like a good development, you know, I'm, probably of the target age that, that strong fulfillment, last mile delivery is aimed for. I appreciate the fact that it's in the area. I don't know who the end user will be, but I know whoever it will be will help the ability to buy things in an e-commerce fashion, which is definitely something I do. But what I, my concern is down the road or maybe even the future when this property changes, the, the Leoni Drive was put, the idea of it was put in there for a reason. And if there's a point at which it may make sense to put it in the future, I would hate to rule that out altogether. You know, I, I think that it makes sense to make sure this development works. It looks like a good one. We want to, we want to be neighborly and make sure that we're business friendly here. But, but I wonder if we can't do it while at the same time making sure that if things change in the future and there is, there is a different ability to do it or a different want to do it, that we don't rule it out as, as a potential. I mean, obviously, if we take it out of the master plan and somebody wants to put it in, I doubt we're going to stop them. I'm just wondering if we can approve the site plan and say, yes, you can put it in. Leave the ability to put Leoni Drive in, and if it's able to be done at some point in the future, it's able to be done without holding back or requiring the developer to do that as part of their, as part of their decision. You know, when I go down 23, there definitely is a lot of traffic in and out of the industrial subs. I think the idea of having Leoni there was there for a reason. Obviously, this, this development is going to increase the traffic flow. And that's not necessarily a bad thing and it should be able to hold it. I just, I wonder if we can make sure we're able to keep this moving for, for the developer. It looks like a good, good development, but also make sure that, that long-term we leave ourselves room to maneuver and make sure if there's an ability to do it or a better, a better time to do it in the future, that it still might happen.
Mr. Tuckfield, this is Mr. Skurdo, if you don't mind, I can take that question.
Yeah, go for it, Dave.
Yeah, keep in mind that the master plan is a policy. It's not an ordinance. That's the first thing to keep in mind. If now, to go with your statement, the development is put in place, does not require the only drive to go in. You got the full right to allow this to go because it's not requiring the drive. If for some odd reason, somebody gets the go ahead to develop the rear half, that's where the drive comes into play for the commission to look at, but for this development, I don't think you necessarily need to be concerned with that at this point. That should be, getting this in or out of the master plan, that should be a separate item that the commission is taking care of separately right now.
Okay, so for the purposes of the site plan, yes, it comes into play with, with the property. But even, even with regards to policy, since they're not developing the back half, the equivalent of the, of the sites that are running along the subdivision to the, to the east and to the west, it's, it's really a moot point because we wouldn't be feeding any uses along that line anyway.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. That answers that question. I appreciate it. To the petitioner, do you anticipate if future Garfield goes through changing the site plan in the future to allow for traffic flow through there? Is that something that, that you see as a possibility? Is that something that if you were to put this in, you would hope would become a priority for the township?
Well, I, I think that, that, that's tough to answer in the affirmative or negative at this time. I think we're, we would like to see how the traffic flows. And if we see an opportunity to better the traffic on, in the township and then on our site with a connection to Garfield, that would be definitely something we would want to research and look into. So we're, we're open to that. But we would, we would like to see what the ultimate effect would be to operations and to surrounding traffic.
And I guess I would ask that question, this is more of a general question. I guess it's less to do with approving this. But would that be, would that be both ways? Could you see a potential that you might, you might prefer not to go through? Or is it just a matter of if it goes through, you'd see if it'd be advantageous for you to connect to it?
Well, I, I think if it goes through and we're seeing an opportunity that it could be advantageous, we would, we would look into it. If, if we saw that it would be detrimental, then I, I don't think we would necessarily spend the time in looking to, to connect if it was going to adversely affect, you know, traffic in the surrounding area or on our site.
Understood. All right, very good. And then I, the last question I had, I think was for, and I have to scroll back up on my list here because I forgot her name. I think Shannon, specifically with regards to the contract delivery people, and maybe this was something that got answered and I missed it. It sounded like the, the contract delivery, the part-time deliveries, whatever the correct term for them would be, would be coming into the front lot that's currently colored orange. Is that, is that accurate?
I believe so. I will defer to Kyle on the specific site plan as he is more familiar.
So, but Shannon, just, yeah, just to clarify, Shannon, the contract employees, that, that is our van.
The van drivers, correct.
So they would be going, Mr. Tuckfield, they'd be going to the blue areas. They'd be coming in with their personal vehicles, driving up, you know, near one of the, near their van, parking their vehicle next to that van or behind it and then getting into the van.
Right, so, and, and, and maybe this is where you had mentioned something earlier and then Shannon said that there was a difference. Just correct me if I'm wrong. If I understand correctly, with some of the services like this, you have the contracts that come in, but then also some people use their own cars. And I guess that's where I was curious. Is there still a component where there would be people using their own vehicles? And if so, would they be going to that parking lot?
Shannon, I believe this is the flex component that I had mentioned earlier.
Yep, exactly. So the flex drivers, I believe, would be, so they'd be driving their own vehicles and they'd be coming in a little bit later, usually like the 4:30 to, to 6:30 PM timeframe. And those would be fewer in numbers depending on, you know, the season and the demand and number of packages that were, needed to be picked up. But they would be driving in their own vehicles. But as far as those, you know, 200 or 330 to 350 third-party drivers, they'd be parking their own personal car and taking out a delivery van for the vehicles.
Right, and so my question is with regards to the flex drivers. Obviously, we don't see facilities, we haven't seen many facilities like this. Hopefully we see more. Obviously, again, I think it's kind of the future. But I assume that, that I need to look at this similar to why I would look, I guess, at a, at a fast food restaurant with stacking. And where I'm wondering is with the flex drivers, what's your experience with stacking on those? Is that something where you like have two at a time? Do they park and bring packages to their car? How does that work with traffic flow in that front parking lot?
Got it. They're a little bit more staggered. So when they're coming into the facility and leaving, so they are coming in, you know, a few at a time depending on, again, demand and loading their vehicles. And then they're not going out in the organized waves that the delivery vans are because it's much lower in volume. So they'll, they'll arrive, they'll fill their vehicle and then they will head out as soon as, as soon as they're loaded.
But you would expect them in a parking spot, taking some type of trolley, I guess, from the, from the building to their car, loading it up, returning whatever they had and then driving out from there?
I believe they'd be loading, or Kyle, can you point to the specific part of the site plan where they would be pulling up? I think that might be helpful.
Well, this is what, you know, in general I've seen before is parking in this, in this area, the associate parking and getting packages in the front, you know, office area. But I've also seen flex drivers that are taking more that as these, these waves of vans are gone, they're coming in and loading in the, under the.
The van dispatch area.
Yeah, so there's, we've seen it done both ways to answer your question. So I've seen parking here with trolleys or maybe it's a one-off package. They, they could come here or if it is a, a larger load, they would be loading in these van loading areas. But the vans would already be gone at that period.
Would you say that there is ever a time, including like I suppose, I would, I would assume that pre-Christmas would probably be a heavy, heavy time for this type of facility, where you would expect any sort of loading to spill out onto 23?
No.
Meaning, meaning stacking of cars, I should say, not loading?
No, you know, I, we would not expect that, you know, the, to get back into, we're not, we, we have our queuing and the loading areas stacked in such a way that this is where we would have, you know, kind of the backup so that we can get out and not have any backup here. But in getting into the facility, there's open roads to get into the parking spaces.
Yeah, and, and obviously you can tell it's very well laid out. That was just where with my, where I was wondering is with the flex portion, because obviously I can see the queuing for everybody else. There's plenty of space for things to back up if you have a stoppage or, or cars. But, but again, I don't have much to compare this with, so I'm, I'm just asking the question. If you guys are confident you're not having, having anybody back out, that's, that's my biggest concern is that there's a different flow and it ends up causing a traffic issue.
And, and the flex component to Shannon's previous point, it is nowhere near the numbers that, that we're talking.
The van drivers are.
With the vans. So there, there would be, without those vans there in the queuing area, there's plenty, there's more than enough space for the amount of flex drivers that might be utilizing these canopied.
Particularly if they're, if they're coming in at four to six and you send everybody out at 10 to, 10 to noon and they have a seven or eight hour route. Yeah, that's, that's going to line up.
And then it, it, as vans are coming back, remember that their spot is already here. So there is a spot dedicated for that van so they can come right in and go to, to their spot.
And they don't need to go back through the queue. They're going back to park until the next day.
Exactly.
Right, okay. All right, I think that's all I had. Thank you, gentlemen, and also Shannon, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Michael, just as a handoff, I can't hear you yet.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry. At this time, I'd like to open it to the public. Mr. Box, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
If anybody would like to speak, please press star nine on your phone or click the raise hand icon on your computer. I'm not seeing any hands being raised at this time.
Okay, then I need a motion to close the public portion for 11:23, 2020 at 8:29. Anybody? So, Mr. Provenzano? You made the motion?
This is Commissioner Bentley.
Oh, Mr. Bentley, okay. Mr. Bentley made the motion to close the public hearing?
Support, Provenzano.
And supported by Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Bentley called the roll.
Yes. Provenzano. Yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we need a motion to approve the site plan. Or is it approved or recommend the site plan to the board of trustees?
Approved.
We approve, yeah.
We made, we need to make a motion to approve the site plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
If there is no other comments or questions on this item, I would like to make a motion to approve the site plan for DGR4 Delivery Station, permanent parcel 0817300001. And this would be contingent upon the comments that Mr. Skurdo identifies in his review with regards to signage approval, screen wall and the performance standards, along with the notes that Mr. Gierman put in his comments as well as far as the signage, the fire department connection and the combustible storage not being present in the building without other fire protection. Like to make a contingent upon that and based on the fact that it passed all other reviews by the township department heads and seems to be a good use for the site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Do we have a second? We have anybody that'd like to second it?
I'll second.
Is this Mr. Bentley?
It was, but I think Mr. Oliver beat me to it.
Okay, then the motion by Mr. Tuckfield to approve the site plan for DGR4 Delivery Station, seconded by Mr. Oliver, Mr. Bentley, go ahead and call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion passes. All right, we are now moving on to old business. Site plan for Four Seasons Adult Living, Permanent Parcel 0835300042, located on the east side of Card Road, a quarter mile north of Hall Road, Section 35, Unica Developing Development Petitioner. And please note that this was, let me see, please note, approval if variance is approved. And I'm not sure what that means, Mr. Box. Tabled from November 9, 2020. Mr. Box?
Yes, so that you're, that please note item probably should have been removed because the variance was approved. The variance, the last time this came before you, the variance had not yet been approved. It has since then, I believe that's the case at least.
It has been approved, Mr. Box.
So this, you guys are probably aware, this came for you at the last meeting, Four Seasons Senior Living Facility. We had some things to iron out. We, Mr. Skurdo and myself spoke on a number of occasions with the petitioner and their architect. And I believe at this time, they have resolved all of the concerns that we had internally and are recommending approval at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Box. At this time, I'd like to open it to the commissioners. Anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Just for the record and clarification, there were a number of issues and Mr. Skurdo's letter did address the elevations and the offsets to satisfy the the ordinance. There was a discussion that the signage didn't have enough information on it to verify that it was in accordance with the zoning ordinance. And I looked at the revised drawings and didn't see any changes. I don't think the foundations match or the drawings match with the elevations for the signage. There was also a question about the doors, the large overhead garage doors. I believe there was a a verbal approval from the Fire Department, but I think I think they were trying to obtain a written approval for that. I believe all other issues have been addressed and and covered on the drawings. So those would mean by my questions as to whether or not those have been resolved as well.
Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo?
I, this is Mr. Box. I will tackle the door issue. So yes, as I mentioned, and well, as you just mentioned, but I mentioned earlier today, Mr. Bentley, I did have a phone conversation a week with Fire. They are in support, but again, that was a phone conversation. I did reach out to Mr. Gierman, the inspector today to get that in writing. I have not heard back from him, but he did verbally tell me that I'm willing to get that in writing, following this and add it to the files. Should you guys like me to do that?
So at this point, you pretty much ironed out all of those issues, except for signage, I guess, and the doors. Is that correct?
Door. Once I get the the written from Fire, it will be ironed out. It was just a verbal. I did not have it documented. And if you want to, you know, make a motion to have it contingent on me getting that in in writing, that's I would be fine with that. As far as the signage, I don't know.
Before.
I'm not sure.
Didn't have to change it.
What the signage is.
Okay. Is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes, we are.
Please state your name and your address for me.
It's Bob Lind at Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township. And I have the proprietor here, Sam Lachirco and Marilyn, so.
Okay, so the the question was the signage. The signage was approved on the site plan from a year ago, which, if I recall from the last meeting, it was going to be, we were going to be allowed to build that same sign on the site. And that was my understanding. Okay. Mr. Box?
I think that's correct.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything else, the petitioner, to add to tonight's comments?
Not right now. I think between the township, your your staff and Robert Lipka, we we had a pretty good discussion last week. And I think everybody was happy and that's what we're here tonight is try to wrap this up so we can go out for engineering approval.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Commissioners, anyone? Okay, not hearing from anyone. Do we have a petition? Do we have a motion? Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I need to open it to the public. So let's open it to the public at 8:38. Mr. Box, is there anybody there?
Anybody who wishes to ask a question, please raise your hand with star nine or the raise hand icon on your computer. I am not seeing any hands raised at this time.
All right, on 11/23 of 2020, we are going to close the public portion at 8:39 PM. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Oliver will make that motion to close.
Okay, go ahead. Did you have more?
No.
Okay. So we got a motion for Mr. Oliver. Do we have a second?
I'll support that, Mr. Commissioner Tuckfield.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. And Mr. Hardy.
Yes. Okay. Motion to close the public hearing is approved. Now we need a site plan motion. We need approval for the site plan for Four Seasons Adult Living. Anybody want to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Oliver. Moved to approve the site plan for the Four Seasons Adult Living, per all the discussion and that Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo have discussed tonight and to the permanent parcel number 0835300042, located on east side of Card Road.
Do we have a second?
Member Shudo will second it.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay.
All eyes.
Motion passes to approve the site plan. All right, next item. Public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Box, do we have anybody that would like to speak?
Anybody who would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, we'll close the public portion at 8:41. I don't think I need to make a motion for this one, correct?
No.
All right, commissioners' comments.
Mr. Chairman, this is Member Shudo. This is to Mr. Box. Do we need to extend the outside dining in the township? A lot of communities are extending it for winter. I think Royal Oak and them are setting up tents and parking lots and so on and so forth. Is that something we would consider as a township to let our small business owners maybe get through this COVID-19 scare?
Mr. Shudo, this is Mr. Box. So the outdoor dining application that we had initially set up earlier this summer was set to expire on November 1. However, in October, we actually transitioned from being just temporary outdoor dining to actually temporary outdoor business. So it included more than just dining as that encompassed some of the things like drive-through COVID testing. And that actually is now set to expire, I believe, at the end of March. So we have already updated that. However, we did note that any businesses that were previously approved and were set to expire in November did need to formally request their extension. And to my knowledge, none of them have actually requested that extension. And I think most of them have started taking down their outdoor dining.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I'd like to thank our new board and congratulations, Charlie and Frank and Mr. Lassito and everybody who got elected. And welcome back, Michael. Good to have you back. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else with comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is a member Bentley.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
I I just wanted to thank you for putting the flags up that we had an image to to look at while we prepared for this meeting and to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
That was that was a nice suggestion, and Mr. Box handled that and did a nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was a good thing, too. I thought it was good. I liked it.
Yep. Anyone else? And I would just like to thank all of you for your patience. This is my first time back and I had a little bit of surgery, probably more serious than I'm willing to admit to. And I'm on demand. I am on demand and things are going well. I need to be very careful with COVID as we all should be. But I just wanted to thank all of you, the commissioners and anybody that wished me well, that, you know, I make a speedy recovery, and I'm doing that. And again, thank you for your patience. I was a little off tonight, but, you know, we'll get better and Mr. Box, are we having a meeting December 1?
I believe we will.
Okay. All right. If you can get those packets out is, you know, whenever you get a chance. That's all I have. Let's move on to Macomb Township Board of Trustees, newly elected, Charlie Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again.
Mr. Oliver.
Welcome back. It's it's nice to hear your voice. I know you went through a lot and God bless you. You did good. On that note, other than that, I just wanted to welcome all the new board members, of course. And I want to note that on November 20, we were sworn in underneath the the flags in on the World Memorial. That was it meant a lot to me because my father was a veteran and we had Judge Viviano swear sign. And then Pete Lassito's uncle swore him, and it was really, really nice. So I think it was a proud day for Macomb Township. I really do. So I just want to bring that up. Also want to thank our planning staff, everyone that worked hard on these, on a couple of these items that we just went through. One was the delivery station. That was quite a big project for Macomb Township. And I know there's a lot of work down here on it. And I just want to thank all the staff that worked hard on it. And also on the senior living, that's going to be, both of them items are going to be great additions to Macomb Township. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. We are now going to the ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield.
Mr. Bentley, I have nothing, nothing new to report.
Okay, sir. Planning Department items, Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo?
Yes, thank you. I don't have anything major to to report this evening. I do see that there was a note in the chat here from Mr. Ronald Papa about the township website stating that the next planning commission meeting is Tuesday, December 15. There is scheduled to be one on on Tuesday, December 1. And I thought we had something on that agenda. But as I'm sitting here pulling up files, it actually looks like we will not have anything on that agenda. So there may not be a meeting on Tuesday, December 1. The next one might in fact be on the 15. So thank you to Mr. Papa for pointing that out.
Okay, sir. Mr. Box, can you tell us how your planning or master plan meetings are going?
Yes, I think they're going great. We're getting lots of feedback. We had some meetings the last few weeks with more of a targeted audience, some landowners in certain sections and areas within the township, as well as some of the developers and and builders that frequently work in the township. I thought we got some great feedback from them and great input. I am thankful for those of you that have participated, even some of the trustees have participated as well, and the new supervisor has participated. We did have our meeting last Thursday postponed. And it will likely be the first full week of December. I believe it's the 8th, 9th, or 10th. We have not set the official date yet, but that will be the final that we will meet with prior to really sitting down and trying to pull together a draft document. In that time period, we will also continue working with you folks on the planning commission as well as some of the other departments here within the township that should do and should have a say in how we develop as well.
Well, it sounds like you and Mr. Skurdo are on the right track to getting it done. So thank you very much for your effort and all the time you spent working on this. I need a motion for adjournment.
So move, Member Shudo.
Mr. Shudo made the motion to adjourn for the evening. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Seconded by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
And Mr. Provenzano.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you all for a great meeting. If I don't see you, Happy Thanksgiving. And we'll see you probably on December 15. Thank you.